Mr. Gators, can you join us?
Jamie.
She walking in?
Is she walking?
I'll text her and just say, "Oh, you just took one to here."
Okay.
She's not going to miss one.
She can't want to use one of the two call-ins.
Yes.
Three minutes.
Yeah.
We can recap. All right, why don't you just go through what we've got here and then we can decide what we want to go with.
Certainly, so. We requested from the Saturday work session were the three plans, Plan C, D, and E. The maps, we have seventeen maps per plan. On each map you have, starting out, you have the overall map. And then for each map, we'll just use the first one as an example, we have the neighborhoods that are listed. You have the normal red showing the existing boundaries. The color is the proposed boundaries for that tenet area. And then you have the new neighborhoods listed that are coming in, what school from, very similar to Plan A and B when it was presented in that format. You have the APUs also listed, superimposed on the map. You can see if they're with a white background, the numbers with the white background. And then Matt produced a generic sheet that has for all three plans, you can reference, refer to that APU and it'll tell you the number of students by year, those are the four years, and then the current assignments for elementary school and for each plan. So I think that's what good ass on these maps. We also have a handout that gives you the subdivisions affected by the redistricting in the last five years for Plans C, D, and E. And we provided junior middle school boundaries for information also.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just a small handout.
Sure, absolutely.
I appreciate it, thank you.
This, this plan, this plan here, is it since the last redistricting, 2015?
The last five years.
Right, the last redistricting was.
Part A is probably included in this, but not part B, which never got included, right?
Yeah, see that if the Plan C moves three of them again, Plan B moves three of them again, and Plan E moves seven of them. So those threes are looking pretty good compared to the Plans A and D that we've got. So that's pretty nice. We aren't moving as many of the kids that were moved as we had before.
And then I didn't mention these, but you've probably already seen these, but the number of affected students that just have Plans C, D, and E, it gives you the number of impacted students and by school, and then also the neighborhood split by proposed plan.
But I understand that E is the highest than E. But is it because of the groupings of APUs that you're moving at one time that could also increase the numbers? So instead of, like when you're using, you're moving a larger unit from one place to the other. It's larger than the regular smaller units, therefore the number could go up. So is that, is that part of this study, 3358?
Of course.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're not just thinking, okay, E is moving the largest number, D middle, and therefore C is the best plan. C is the best plan, yes, it's moving less kids, but if you look at D and E, you're moving larger APUs also, in addition to more kids.
We have to decide what we want to try to accomplish this evening? Obviously, if you have any action.
Do you have an agenda?
No, we don't have an agenda other than discussing the redistricting. But if we can eliminate one of these plans, that would give us more time to spend on the other two. I mean, it's really going to be up to the board if you want three to go forward, we can, but I think it's going to be challenging to narrow it down at the end. We're just getting started. Stop. I ate my little crackers on the way down, so. Where, you're basically just dealing with what we have here. Apparently, the request that I had intended to make to get the numbers of the student who are in subdivisions from El Chad that are included in the APUs was not on the list. So Matt is putting that together, of course, and these are undeveloped subdivisions that are including these numbers where there are no students currently, because that's something that we may want to consider when we're looking at potential adjustments. It's only been a few days since we reviewed these, but is there anyone that is interested in moving forward with all three? Or, you know, eliminating one? That doesn't mean the other two have to stay as they are, but, you know, it would mean we would go forward with two. We still have another work session, so we can still, you know, work on, we can work on all three of them, we'll work on two of them next week. But by the end of the work session next Thursday, we have to be in a position where we identify which plans are going to go to the public hearing. Because when we go to the public hearing, we're going to ask for public comment on the plans. And that would include any adjustments that we may want to make to, you know, any one or more of these plans. And that's based a lot on the feedback that we're getting. We appreciate what you've done, especially adding in the human, the human error on some of these. But we've gotten, you know, more information from the, you know, residents in the district that have pointed out certain facts that you would not have been aware of in terms of traffic issues and recent redesignments and things like that. So that's what I think that is our responsibility if we want to make any adjustments to make them before they go to public hearing, so that the public will have an opportunity to make comments, you know, what we're, what we're looking at. I would not want us to make any significant changes after, you know, afterwards that have not been addressed either through the public hearing. Things may come up at the public hearing that we may want to make some changes to, but not any, you know, any of them doesn't come up there. We need to consider everything that we have at this point. And I think you all saw, we did get the hearing scheduled for the 13th and 14th, one, first one. Staff members on the 14th. Thank you, Dr. Chase.
Do you want to go over, I don't know, just see what people's thoughts are?
Start with, start with Dr. Chase?
Okay, I'll start. You know, for me, plans are, you know, there are good and bad things about the different plans. For me, Plan D is problematic because of Brent's district. And I'm going to have a hard time asking people who didn't deal in Run to be driven all the way up to Brent. So that's, that's an issue for me. I, I like Plan C, the fact that the Rocky Run kids get to, I mean, that the Old Forge kids get to stay at Rocky Run, because that, that group of kids have been at Rocky Run for a long time and they're, kids who are more at risk. And so I think being someplace where the faculty and staff know them is something I like about that plan. The concerns that I have, you know, it might be minor little things, but those are sort of the big things for me with, that I, that I have a problem with. D, E also has the Rock, those Old Forge kids moving. And again, you know, it may or may not be possible to keep them at Rocky Run, but I would like to be possible. And I think that's about it. And I can think on the first pass, maybe somebody will say something that hits me on the other pass.
How many streets are it, Old Forge?
I was looking, I'm going to guess just because it's probably, maybe you all know, I mean, in that little triangle there, I think I saw 225 maybe at some point.
That's close, that's close enough. I mean, it's a significant, it's a significant number that we can't just make an adjustment.
Right, that's a bigger, yeah, yeah.
And how about the, the England Run going to Brent? How many, about, about how many?
I, in Plan D, when you. Because it's weird, I mean, it's like there's a little teeny here and it's a very odd looking.
I think it's addressed in two of the other plans.
It is addressed in both of the plans, but, but other, other board members, it may not be.
Well, that's why I'm trying, I'm trying to get a sense for the numbers, is that these are things that we can, you know, address easily?
Sure, right.
Or maybe you can't. I mean, with, with 200 plus, I don't know how we would make an adjustment.
Right.
If it's 20, potentially. So did we, you're looking at that number?
Yeah.
And it's not just going to be England Run, I mean, I think Treslo, Ridge, Teak Park, all of that being driven all the way up to Brent is kind of, going to be a challenge.
226.
226? Yeah.
All right, so that's the same. 226, that's Old Forge?
No, 230. Yeah, 233 was Old Forge. And that's just Plan D, so.
Okay. Any volunteers to go next?
I'll go. So for me, Plan D works for me. I find that the kids that are at Hampton Oaks right now that live behind Lowe's could get to walk to Moncur, and the parents could be involved in activity. Autumn Ridge that sits on an island by itself gets to stay at Mining Creek where they are right now. With Plan C, they move. And Embry Mill is one big neighborhood that gets to stay together at ND. And yet, in every single plan, Hampton Oaks is divided. Right smack in the middle of a street, old general road, families living on one side that play and go to games with the opposite side, get to go to opposite suites. And so I would like, even though, you know, none of the plans address that, I will go with the best plan, which is, yeah, at this point, hopefully, we could at least make some changes there.
Do you have the proposed changes you're thinking of?
It would be the two APUs that are actually Hampton Oaks that are slated to go to Park Ridge. Do you need the numbers?
Those are APUs.
181.1?
No, 316 and 316.1. APUs 316 and 316.1?
181.2.
So, what about 181.2?
You're in D, I'm looking at D.
I'm looking at D. These two, Park Ridge, 316 and 316.1, and I'm looking at 181.2 as well. So how many students are in those three? Do you make points? 316?
It's 31, 31, 34, 35. That's just the projection, so it goes, starts at 31 and goes up to 35.
Okay, and then 316.1?
31, 31 going up to 33.
And then 181.2?
15 going up to 17.
Now, what about 181.1? Isn't that, that's Hampton Oaks, too, that's all, it'd be the lane and Arber Lane. That's, that's 28, 27.
Actually, could be, is it slated to go to Park Ridge right now?
One, one D it is.
Yeah, and that's a story because they are, Arber Lane is, I think, Arber Lane.
It's Arber Lane and Hampton Oaks.
I know, but the, it's a long street that goes to 7, but.
It does, it goes into.
And I know you can take part of it and put it somewhere, it has to be together, unfortunately. I'll take them too, they're our family.
Okay. Any comments on the other plan?
Sarah likes C, so if we have to take two, I'll take C and D.
I like D too, but yeah.
We don't have to pick two.
Yeah, okay, Sarah liked D.
Make one. Okay, so do you have any, anything on the other two plans?
Like I said, I studied all three. And D is best for the majority of the issues that I had in terms of large number of individuals and groups of students.
Hi.
Next.
So I like E, and I like E because it does a couple of things. It fixes the Augustine North issue that I've been yelling about.
But, what do you mean? They're bonded.
I thought, I thought I saw it going to.
They're different. Under E.
Well, it's white. It's right there. Okay. Oh, it's because it's not color coded, is that right?
It's, it's print. It doesn't stay in one.
Oh, all right, well, we will need to fix that. Been yelling about this for three weeks, four weeks ago. The other, the other thing is.
I'll second that, you see.
Thank you. The other thing is I'm happy that the Harbor gets to stay together, that was very important. The only other issue that I have that affects all three of these is the fact that Brooksmill, Poplar Hill, and Windmere are carved out.
Yeah.
And they, they need to stay where they're at. I mean, it's, they're part of a community, like we're trying to keep all the communities together. The fact that they would have to drive down to Grafton makes no sense to me. Now, if you want to look at something to take away from Staffordville, those Aberley apartments.
Give us those numbers so we can, the APU numbers.
They are.
Which are, are we on a line of medium?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's on all three, so.
296.0, 296.1, 296.2. Actually, .2 isn't on Plan E, they're still slated for Staffordell.
Okay, 296.1, 2, and 3, is that what you said?
No, 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 296.0, 296.1, and then 296.2 is in Plan.
So, so 296 is 28 going down to 26. 296.1 is 33 going up to 34. 296.2 is 32 going up to 35.
Okay, but you said 296.2 is not in.
It's not in Plan E, but it is in Plan C. And that, that increases the amount of kids that were pulled out of Staffordell who should be in Staffordell. So I say no to Plan C. But going back to Plan E, well, actually, all the plans, Aberley is in here. But can you look up what Aberley apartments is supposed to be generating?
We can read that.
They are. They're in a pile. They are.
This is far.
29. 292.0, I think, 292.1. I want to see if I have the right ones.
Yeah, it is, 292.0.
Okay.
Three.
Scott, thank you for these charts we can actually read. Yes, they're amazing.
So, so here's the problem with this, there's 288 apartments here. How are we only coming up with?
Three kids?
Three kids, or 20 kids, or whatever it is. 200, and I talked to, I talked to some people who go to Stafford Elementary School, and they said Aberley's pumping kids out of there left to night, so.
Oh, were those up and running, kids are in there?
Oh, yeah. And I called them today, and they refused to tell me how many three bedrooms they had. But the three bedrooms are going to accommodate families, so you're going to have families generated out of this development. So we're accounting for 60 kids out of a community that doesn't, Poplar Hills too. 60 kids out of Poplar Hills and Brooksmill. And they're built out. And now we've got only three being generated out of 288 apartments. I find that incredibly impossible.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, 292.1, 292.1 has 21, 21, 20, 21. My numbers.
Okay.
292.1 is 21. 292 is three kids.
All right, so we're looking at 23, 24 kids out of, out of 288 apartments. Still doesn't cut the mustard. And the fa, and the fact that they are at the same distance as the people who live on Brook Road from Grafton. This is a, it's an apartment complex, these are transient people, most of them of their families are probably living there because they're waiting to move into a home, or they're trying to figure out if they like Stafford or not. So they're going to be moving out. So we're going to displace kids who will make this, who have roots here for people who are going to be moving in and out. And I, that's what I have a huge problem with.
Well, this, this particular planning unit is so close to Stafford Elementary, so. See here, these, if you can see on the screen, I don't know if you can see, but this is, has 21 kids. This whole thing, there are only two planning units. And together, they have 24 kids. So if you look at it right now, there are 21 kids, but the projection is just telling us a very moderate growth, 22, 24.
So how can we have hundreds of apartments that are going to have 24 kids in the area? I wonder if they're age restricted, or is that what they have?
That might be a question for Matt.
Okay.
And this is, this is, this is all the dental period?
I, I think it's built out, it's fairly new. It's fairly new, but I believe it is built out, but I don't know that personally, I've heard that.
You know, it's still like, transportation, you know how many kids we're picking up? I mean, it seems like we could find that answer quickly. Yeah, it shouldn't be that much.
You have various digits on your phone.
What's that?
Yeah, I said you have various digits.
As of September 30th, there were only 21 kids coming out.
I know, you keep telling me that, but I'm telling you, there's 288 apartments there, one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedrooms. So that's impossible. And especially when I'm hearing from the people at Stafford Elementary School that they're already getting lots of kids that are coming this year, right now. Just telling you, people on the ground are seeing it, the projections could be wrong.
I'm not talking about projections, I'm talking about now.
Right, and that's fine. We're talking about projections because we're moving kids.
We can follow up on that, try to get a little bit more clarity.
So it's your request that 292 go to Grafton?
Yeah, and I'd like to get maybe some more realistic numbers. Yeah, because we can swap them out if we can get, there's no way there's going to be 60 kids coming out of Brooksmill. It's not going to happen. I can see 60 kids coming out of, out of the apartments, but not out of Brooksmill.
Okay, but, but then you're really violating our proximity criteria, right? I mean, I just want to make sure we all agree that now we're saying proximity doesn't matter in certain places.
Well, proximity doesn't matter if you've got transient folks who are not going to be staying in, you don't stay in apartments for your entire career.
I don't think that's such a statement, there's people that live in apartments and stay in apartments, and I, I wouldn't be calling them transient either.
These are $2,300 a month for three bedroom apartments.
I was just looking at the, the cost there, and you are going to be limiting, like, the families that are moving, because when you're paying $2,200 a month, you can get a house for that.
Right.
And if you're, if you, if you need a three bedroom, you can get a house as a family. So I'm just saying, maybe that's why it's a lower.
Number of kids.
Number of kids projected. I, I don't know, I'm just, I was trying to find some prices here.
They can afford $2,300. Recently, I applied.
Yeah, if they can afford $2,300 a month, they probably don't have kids who are getting ready to go to college.
Anyway, I mean, I'm not going to assume they're.
But we're, we're talking.
We're making, these, these, we're taking comments and suggestions, potentially requests at this point, so we're just, we're noting these.
This question, I will have an answer to you by tomorrow. This is not going to be a very difficult one to see, how many kids are coming to our school? Just cross-reference between transportation and Stafford Elementary School, so do an address check, okay?
Good. And also check the distance between the folks at Brooksmill to Grafton and the, and the folks at Aberley to Grafton. And we're talking proximity.
Well, but, but we also.
We're taking, we're taking people who live closer to Staffordella way and putting them to Grafton, so it's six and one half dozen on the other.
Well, but we also need to look at the distance from their APU to Stafford Elementary School as well. I mean, it's not just the distance to, I mean, what we're saying is, how much of a change are we asking these people to, to go in terms of their travel, right? If you're a mile from Stafford Elementary and nine miles from Grafton, that's a big change versus you're nine miles from Grafton versus 11 miles from Grafton. I mean, from nine miles from Stafford and 11 miles from Grafton.
But they're all on, on the highway, they, it's all highway miles. For my folks on, on Brook Road, they have to go down, well, they can't go down, they're, it's closed. But they have to, you know, they have to go.
Maybe it's not, maybe it's not either or.
Well, that's fine, I, I tell you what my.
I'm just reluctant.
I didn't interfere with what you asked for, so I'm asking for this information, that's all I'm going to say.
And it's also, and it's also, as, as a lot of us are going to be asking for, for information, it's really important to understand that we're all the representatives of certain people. And so it's our job to then, you know, talk with them. And, and hey, some of my people are, are a little bit further from one than the other, and they're like, no, that's okay, we, we're okay with going there. So it's, you know.
Well, if, if the numbers are correct, which maybe there are, then it's not going to really make that much difference if we're talking about 24 students, right? Because, you know, just leaving them there and looking at maybe all the other ones. I know, I was concerned and wanting to make some changes when I got the emails from the people of Brook Road and the Marlboro Point because of the, and I'm not, for lack of a better word, I'll call arguments that were put forth to support them staying there. So I think they made a very good case, right? And, you know, if, if it's an issue to move somebody out to take their place, that's one thing. But, you know, I would, I would like to look at a way to leave them in.
Right.
I mean, if we can, if we can make a switch that is, that works, that, that doesn't, you know, cause an undue hardship on anybody and doesn't violate our, our criteria. But keep in mind, our criteria is, is very broad. You know, that's certainly something to consider, too. But I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned about those.
Yeah.
That, that's, what was it, two ninety-six, two ninety-six point one, two ninety-six point two. You know, based on the.
All the emails we got.
Emails that we received.
And, and we, are you done?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Thank you. There, there are some areas that individuals have not contacted us because either they don't know they're affected. And with some of the changes, you know, they looked at Plan A and B, and now they haven't looked at it again. So we just need to make sure that we'll be kind of swapping, moving to one place and fitting them in either their current school or another school is one thing. But swapping individuals out at this point in time, we just need to be cognizant of that and make sure that those individuals have some time to rebuttal. And sometimes they don't because they may be living in apartments or in, in individuals that don't know what we're doing. Actually, they're in DC, working and home, and, you know, figure it out later. And don't have a chance to, you know, have these emails and these group emails and responses and et cetera. So, so we will speak on their behalf, like Jamie said. We, we're looking at all constituents, but I'm also looking at others in addition to my own.
Yeah, I'm, I'm most familiar with my district and my constituents and the issues that are there. So that's what I'm going to be addressing. But the ones, you know, like, I don't know yours, I'm not as familiar with your roads, but I'm, I'm certainly cognizant of what they're saying. And I, and I think that that is a basic start. We look to see if we can do something. That's somewhat different from where we have, you know, a very tight, like Garrisonville. You know, it's, it's a very populated area. And, you know, very different from, say, out at Marlboro Point or Brook Road or. We have our own little traffic jams, but nothing like fun like they have.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, Holly, ready?
Sure, I mean, I can give some kind of broad comments. I, I share with, on D for our area, one of the main things that I feel like we wanted to address, which has been talked about for years, is the density around Amman Run and trying not to divide that neighborhood up into as many schools as possible. And I think whichever plan, the plans that are trying to hone down and get us in there, I think to the extent we can also follow the middle school layouts over Amman Run, I think that's helpful. It is, you know, somewhat helpful there that there's not the upheaval. But I do think under D, I believe it's four schools, and I think that that's too much. I would stick more with a C or E, at least for that area of the map. Because I know we all are looking at our areas of the map. With regard to Rocky Run and those areas, you know, we do hear about and we do talk about, you know, proximity. The Cardinal Forest neighborhood is really right across that street and has been a part of Rocky Run. And I know that that, they can travel. But I would say, when I'm looking at the growth that's been sort of put into the Stafford Lakes neighborhood, it's, that's an established neighborhood. It's been there a while. I, I mean, it may grow, but I don't think it will grow at, at that rate. But it seems like there may be the room to be able to put two established, to keep some established neighborhoods in there as well. So that's something I'm looking at, just to talk about. We can do the, the numbers, but we.
Yeah, which APUs Cardinal Forest?
Cardinal Forest is. They're going to be two seventy-five point O, and then we got an email, I know, from the Berea Hills group, which was two seventy-five point one.
Okay, so it's fifty-eight going up to seventy-six for two seventy-five?
Which seems like an awful lot of increase.
It says a lot of credit develops.
I'm just telling you what this is.
Yeah, I know.
And then two seventy-five point one is fourteen going up to twenty-one.
And that's twenty-seven homes. And like, he's my friend, he's in there asking. That's something you need to tell me about the APU.
So I'm just saying.
Water is at the Hartwood Water, Holly.
I know. I've been accused of that for a lot of the.
We just changed the pump there, so.
So it should be good. So, but I'm just saying, I'm looking at, at those because it seems like that's an area that there may be some growth that's anticipated that I'm not certain is, is really there. And it may be that. One of the things about E that is attractive to me, I think anybody who may have been at the work session on Saturday, there was a group from, a lady there from Lake Estates. If you go on your Margaret Brent blue, you go all the way towards Centerport Parkway and stuff. There, there are twenty-seven homes. Under E, they stay in Margaret Brent because their feeder pattern will be Mountain View High School and Rodney Thompson. And it would seem like when they are grabbed to either go to, I think it's Falmouth or Conway, that just seems like a really small group of kids.
Do you know what number they are?
Um, yes, if I went on my Margaret Brent aisle, I'm sorry. I think they're two twenty and two twenty point one.
Okay. So two twenty is fifteen going down to thirteen, and two twenty point one is sixteen going down to eleven.
Two, yeah, that's about what I have. So it's not a, a really huge number. I mean, they may be a little high.
Twenty-one to twenty-five kids.
So I, I just wanted to say, that's one, though, for me, I think, when we're looking at that, those small groups that then the feeder pattern really is shrinking. And because they would come straight up Mountain View Road, they're at the end of Mountain View Road. So that's just, those are a couple that I, I would note. I have some concerns about some of the growth that's in the middle of Hartwood. We have some two, of course, just under fifty, I wonder why. Forty-nine A homes going in in this Liberty Hall. And that's why I think we have to be very careful where we put those, those two, those APUs that have that growth because they are building, there's forty-nine expected, and then there's one right next door with another forty-nine. Now, that may be, though, outside the four-year window for the second one. But the first one, they are selling. I went by there today. I think a lot of us have been in some offices maybe today. So it's just making sure that we are, you know, I'm, I'm trying to make sure we capture those grows. And then there's some in Mindy and Creek, but I'll let you deal with those.
I'll go ahead.
I think you skipped over, you skipped over, I'm doing.
Oh, Jamie, too.
Oh, oh, you're going.
We're not done yet.
Yeah. Okay.
I think in the Rock Hill area, we have some neighborhoods like Wainey. Subdivision, let's see, the Meadows. A couple of those that all come up in that area that I just think we have to be very aware of that APU as exploding. I think there's the courtyards at Colonial Forge that could be, that are not part of the Colonial Forge neighborhood that might be able to be taken out. And that's about twenty-four kids. That if we need some things that aren't built on the edges that we need, I would much rather be built right now than somebody who's already been there for a long time.
Right. And that's what now is.
Right, exactly.
Worse.
So I may, I may have repeated what everything you said. I'm sorry.
It's important, especially if they're built into these numbers.
And once I understand the Hartwood Landing, I have to say, it must have been my eyes. I was trying to figure where that is. I see they are split in Plan E. Once I kind of drill down how many of those are, and they have a request, I don't know if it's a couple sections. I gotta look at the entrance and exit, if that makes any sense. Because if it's sort of an entrance and the bus is going and picking up two sets of kids, one for Brent, one for Hartwood, I may say. But I don't, I haven't driven that one, so.
Is it?
Yeah, that's her. We're skipping you?
Okay.
She's, she's.
All right.
She's a screamer.
Okay, so.
Maybe all saw them, not all.
I'm trying to keep count with C, D, E, and U are on the road.
I like to be, and C, I think they have, I, my problem with D is dividing up what Amman Run into four schools. Just that, that's the part. And the travel time from Amman Run to Brent is, yeah, and we really want to, I, I really thought that was something that for those kids really needs to be.
So which?
C and E would be, E is probably, is preferred, but C has some good stuff. Like I said, D may be a bit long, right? And Amman Run.
Do you want to say, did you want yours?
No, no, I just didn't, I didn't want to start. We were still talking about that one, so. Okay, so you guys know, I'm, I'm still very concerned about moving Brentsmill out of Widewater. That is the one right off the Telegraph that is a walking zone currently. That's currently a walking zone to Widewater, but is, is supposed to be moved to Moncur. And just in case you didn't hear me last time, I'm not talking about C, D, or E because all of mine are the same on every one. So this is the same for every plan.
So you have a preference.
No, no, I'm, I'm, so I'm, I'm taking notes and, and I'll, you know, whatever works for you guys as far as the plans are concerned. But that kind of moves me into my next point. So, so, so Brentsmill really does need to stay at Widewater. And I understand in order for Brentsmill to stay at Widewater, we have to, to move something else out. So, so I do have a couple proposals. But first, my, my other glaring concern is, is Aquia Harbor. I'm really appreciative, and trust me, so are they, that they were kept together on, on these plans. It's a one-way-in, one-way-out neighborhood. It doesn't make any sense for buses to go in and go different directions, grab kids, all come back to the same point and then turn left or right or wherever to take them.
Turn like, turn right.
To take them to their various schools. That's an issue for me, too. So, so I know that they're all really appreciative that they, they, they were left together in these plans. But here's where I think many of us share a concern. Aquia Harbor was kept together. I'm just saving because if the recording, people can't hear. So Aquia Harbor was spared at the cost of Hampton Oaks, and nobody's comfortable with that. Aquia Harbor gets to stay together at Hampton Oaks and kicks Hampton Oaks out of Hampton Oaks. So, so I, I'm not comfortable with that, but, but I understand there are only so many things you can do. My last concern about my, my district specifically is that they only have one option. So I hope you guys don't mind, I've talked to a couple of you already. I did make the beginnings of a second option for my district. And what I'm just asking you guys to do perhaps is, no matter what plans you guys would work for your guys' neighborhoods, whether you move C and E or C and D forward, I would just ask that when you guys finalize which two plans you're going to send, I would like to send one forward as is. And I would like to send one forward with some of the requests that I'm asking. I don't know if you want me to go through these because moving, Aquia Harbor has five hundred and thirty-nine students. So in order to move them out of Hampton Oaks and into Moncur, as you can imagine, I had a lot of APUs then that I had to touch. I tried to keep it within my area so there wasn't spillover into other areas. Anyway, so I guess what I'm asking really is just to have you look at these. You've probably already tried them. Maybe see if they're slightly feasible. I might have done some things just based on my knowledge of the area that you didn't think was possible, but is because I've talked to the neighborhoods.
Jamie, how many, did you look into how many kids were living in APUs in Hampton Oaks?
So it's, it's sixty, sixty-five for these two, the two APUs that need to come back into Hampton Oaks.
Would that, would that make the Hampton Oaks whole as a community?
No. No, they needed to bring, but what my numbers kind of did was brought some more people back into Hampton Oaks that were being moved out in some of these plans. So it kept some students in Hampton Oaks and brought Hampton Oaks back together.
I guess, I guess my, I, I, I understand what you're asking and I don't know quite. I mean, my, my concern is that we are not supposed to, you know, that like, we, we hire a consultant with the idea that we wouldn't be messing around to that degree. And that just seems like a lot of kids to be moving. I don't know what other members of the board, what their opinion is.
Yeah, I think when you look at it, it's not really that many kids because it's not moving quite as many kids as are currently moving.
But I guess the issue I have is that, I mean, I don't know what degree you've been able to look at free and reduced lunch in your calculations.
And that's why I'm asking her to take this and run it and see if it's feasible. And if my numbers are even right.
Right.
And I can also just assure you, because I know you really didn't like the fact that some of these plans came from members of our community.
Right.
These have not come from anyone. They're not, they're specifically me sitting down and drawing circles on my own map and using my own APUs and all of that, putting them together, so.
But, but then, I, I mean, this is just, just the professor and me dealing with when people come and they say, well, I, I want to turn in my paper late. And then I have to say, well, everybody can turn in their paper late. Or it would be good for me.
Well, I hear everyone going around the table talking about APUs that they'd like to move. So I'm just doing the same.
Okay, okay.
I'm, I'm going to listen to it, particularly if they're primarily in your district. But if we don't move.
Every APU is in my district, except for the two that I grabbed from Hampton Oaks to put back in Hampton Oaks.
So it may be, is, and I don't know because I haven't seen it in, you gave me an overview, but.
Well, they actually know somewhere in Ivy. I was going to share Aquia Harbor.
But, but to the extent that we're not moving almost six hundred students, it's got to have an impact. I mean, maybe fewer students that are getting moved overall.
I just think, I think it's, I think it would really be a shame if everybody else said, okay, we're going to move these two plans forward, and you guys sit around here and you pick two plans that work really well for your districts. And then I'm just going to sit here and, and say, yeah, you know what, whichever two you guys pick because mine are the same in all of them, and you're not giving my constituents a choice. You're not saying here Moncur or here Hampton Oaks, and then, you know, pick. And everyone should be able to have that option. I spent hours, hours, hours driving, talking to people and making this plan. So everyone should really have that opportunity if, if their constituents feel so strongly.
You know, it is unfortunate that under every plan, Jamie's district is the same.
They should have an option.
On every plan, Pam's district is the same.
Well, your district is not the same. Hampton Oaks is on every plan, and this helps Hampton Oaks. So this would give Hampton Oaks a different alternative.
Hampton Oaks is the same with C D.
And if, what I'm asking.
Exactly the same on all of them?
But your whole district isn't the same on every plan. And, and this actually would give Hampton Oaks an opportunity to have an option.
The only thing that we're moving from Hampton Oaks or in Hampton Oaks is those two APU units that are currently.
Well, no, no, that's not, no, no.
No, I'm saying right now, those are the only two that are outside of Hampton Oaks, two APU units.
No, that's not true. So what I'm asking is for this to be run so that you guys can see it and then make a choice. Whether or not it's something you will accept.
Why don't we run it and then send it to us to look at before we begin, if that's.
And that's why I bring it to the work session, so that you'd be able to see it at the next work session and see if it's feasible, appropriate. And if it, you know, we're, it's a seven-member voting board. If you don't like it, then you can toss it.
Okay, but I just want to be, I want to be clear. So if another member decides that they really want to drill down, because they, we didn't say at our last meeting that members could bring their own plans, are we going to be okay with another member bringing a plan and asking for it to be run?
Okay, so I'm, I'm just bringing APUs that I want to see switched. So some of my APUs, it looks like I have a long list because some of my APUs are neighborhoods. And it's about four APUs. So it's, this is just asking for certain APUs to be switched places, which is what I hear everyone asking for. And yes, and I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And if you want to go around the table, we could do that as well.
Well, is there any objection? I mean, it's just going to come back to us. It'll be something we can, next week is the, the D day for us, decision day. And we don't have to limit it to, I was just suggesting that it could be more feasible to move forward if we limited it to two. But we don't have to.
Do we have some time to work on hours tonight? Like if I would like to put in some time to, then, because I.
Sure.
Well, can we just, can we send them to Scott, to Ricky, or?
Well, let me just, just, I just want to make sure everybody's where this part.
I'm not saying any of them will get. I'm not saying any of them will get approved, but.
Yeah, let me just say this, first, first, we, we have the money, I want to make sure I make that statement first, but we have completely exceeded what our agreement was, was with a consultant. So we're in the process of negotiating each additional plan, so I just wanted you to know that. And it falls under the number that I really need to bring it back to you, but I'm planning to bring it back to you anyway, so you get an idea of what we're spending for it. So I would just ask you to bring a plan, if you really want to bring a plan, but not to bring a plan, because one person's bringing a plan, everybody feels like they gotta bring a plan. Is that, you know what I'm saying? Like, if you really have a plan, bring it forward, but, you know, I'm just being very respectful as best I could, that Jamie has a real concern or question or issue if she's bringing a plan, and if you want to bring a plan, that's fine, just recognize that each plan, um, will cost us more money, okay?
Considering there was only one for the whole district that was exactly the same in every plan, I don't think it's unreasonable for a proposal to, you know, have something else to look at.
And I'll just, I'll just end my, my time with this. Aquia Harbor at this point is happy to stay at Hampton Oaks. They, Aquia Harbor is perfectly fine with this one plan that they've been given. I'm personally not, because it separates neighborhoods that are, I feel like that is their community neighborhood, just as much as I feel like Moncur is Aquia Harbor's community neighborhood, very much so. Um, and the last thing is, I, I, Sarah, I am one hundred percent on the same page that we don't want school members, school board members in here cherry-picking neighborhoods, and I did my absolute best to pick APUs that made perfect sense, followed feeder patterns, um, and didn't disrupt free and reduced things. I, I did my very best to give my constituents a, just a second option. So, I do understand your concern, and it was mine as well. I'm done.
Good, James.
Well, good evening, it's, uh, great to be here again with you. A lot of things I could have been doing, but I chose to, I chose to stay with you. But anyway, okay. You know, so, you know, Ferry Farm and Grafton Village are, I consider my, my schools, and I share Grafton Village with, but they're all my schools, so. I'll first talk about Ferry Farm, and then I'll move on to Grafton Village. All three plans, um, I, I presented a proposal three, three years ago to, that looks very much like what the experts did, so, am I an expert? No, I won't say that, but, um, so Ferry Farm is, is, is pretty, it's pretty geographically situated where it's pretty simple. I have that whole, um, eastern portion of, of the George Washington District, and White Oak Road is that large road that kind of bisects, which, if you will, the north from the south. And it's, and all plans have that White Oak area, uh, and that Ferry Farm area, and that little bit of Chatham area, all the way up to about Earl's Hardware, somewhere around there is probably a sensible, um, uh, place to stop the boundary and then start feeding into Falmouth and the other schools. So, I really have no, um, issues with Ferry Farm on either of the plans. They're, they're very, very much similar, um, and, and they all make sense. So, I guess that just leaves Grafton Village Elementary School. That's a little bit trickier, because if you look at the Grafton Village map, it's really, I mean, it kind of goes up into Stafford Elementary School. Um, I'm generalizing right now, I'm not, I'm not talking plans, I'm not talking plans, so I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bore you, I'm not gonna bore you with my APU expertise, right? So, long story short is, uh, Grafton Village may be a place where, um, I, I may come back to the board after re-looking at these and say, hey, do these APUs, should they probably stay at Stafford Elementary School? I, I was already very vocal about Amarco Point, um, just like I think we all are, that whole boot kind of doesn't, doesn't make sense to kind of swing back towards Grafton. And there may be some other, uh, smaller neighborhoods along that White Oak Road line that I may talk to some folks about, but other than that, the, the plans are, are pretty much the same. So that's, that's my area. So now let's move on to, as a board member, looking at all the children of the schools. Number one, I'm gonna listen to all you board members, and I'm gonna take your issues, and, and I'm gonna really, I'm gonna really listen to you. Because if you think that, you know, you're the experts in your area, and if you say that you don't want to do that, maybe then I'll, I'll agree with you. I'm for moving less kids, um, as, you know, this is very ten-thousand-foot level stuff. I'm, 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 I'm for not splitting as many neighborhoods, because I know we have Min-7, 7-11, 11-15, whatever the, was that data, those data sets that I wrote down last time. So, I'll, I'll be considering those as well, um, and, and not splitting neighborhoods, not moving as many kids, and listening to my other board members for input. That's it.
Okay, well, of, of the plans, for me, let's see. One would work best with one change, and then is Plan B, and that changes. Shall I just go to the back? Stay in Windy Creek. I'm gonna make sure that's not the one that split up a portion of.
Did you say Winding Creek?
Stay, stay in Windy Creek. Now, looking at the numbers, I don't, I don't have my list, but my recollection is that the numbers for Windy Creek to start and end in that year cycle were much lower than our.
They were, they were, I've counted them here.
Our target. So that it's like seventy-two point five, ending at eighty-one point zero eight. So if we set a range of eighty-one to ninety-one, I mean, we're significantly below that. I mean, we're ten percent under, um, at least one, one of them. So, the reason I asked, and I'm, I'm hoping that will be back shortly.
He's, he's printing right now.
He's printing out. For these numbers of students in the new undeveloped subdivisions is, I, I believe there may be some that are included in these Augustine numbers, because I, I mean, I know that subdivision, I remember when it was developed, it's built out, and I can't imagine them multiplying the number of students there. I mean, some of these, um, subdivisions, you know, they are attracting lots of young families, but I haven't seen that in Augustine North. And I don't anticipate.
Which APUs do we?
I think it is three twenty-two point three, three twenty-two point oh and three twenty-two point one. That's what I look at here, and if you look.
Oh, wow, thirty-nine to sixty-five?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, where all these kids are coming from. But anyway, we'll see when we get.
Oh, I thought you were asking a biological question.
I mean, we're not Hartwood, we don't have that Hartwood water, you know? It's not millennium, but, but, yeah, well, we, but, but even, you know, with, assuming that it's, even these number of students, I think there would be room to stay within our projections. So that, that would be, that would be my request, um, because otherwise, you know, we, we're assuming that it doesn't take out some of the students from Rock Hill and move them over, it, it may divide part of Rock Hill, St. George's Estates.
They're together.
You know, they're together in there? Okay. It wasn't that many students, but it just sort of stopped somewhere, and, you know, we, people came to the town hall meetings and they said, you know, I'll come, and people across the street or down the street, you know, get to stay. And normally, I would just say, well, that's the way it worked out, for at least in terms of the plans, but we've got, between Rock Hill and Garrisonville, we've got two schools with literally hundreds of extra seats. So why would we move students from one subdivision, from one underutilized school to another utilized, underutilized school? I don't, and, and I'm not, this is not a criticism of what you're doing, but it's, it's, it's my common sense, um, application. So, you know, my desire for Augustine to stay in Windy Creek is that they have been there since the beginning, it's, they're part of the community, and if you look at each of these charts, it looks like they're carved out of Windy Creek. I mean, you see, there, there's this little part right here, and that they, they carved them out, and I don't, they, um, I, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, indeed, indeed, some of the carve-out is back. It's just not for Augustine North, it's for, um, Autumn Ridge.
Yeah, D is, yeah, D is.
What hap, what happened, O on D?
Yeah, Autumn Ridge was carved out of Windy Creek, they're in there right now, they were carved out, so it'd be nice if they could stay too.
Autumn Ridge, I don't know what to find.
It's at the top, it's right next to, um.
But I, it looks like they're, in Plan B anyway, it looks like they're in Windy Creek.
Yeah.
I'm looking at E.
She's, uh, she's an E here, I'm, I'm the only E here.
Well, the reason I like E is also, it leaves Amy Clay and Berkshire both in Windy Creek. And just like we have three sections in Aquia Harbor, and they do everything together, Amy Clay and Berkshire, for all intents and purposes, could be one subdivision. I mean, they grew up together, they were both out of Mr. Mussel's farm, where he used to have his cows, and they, you know, they're, they're, they, they all, you know, go to, um, Thompson, I, I think they're, they're all in the walking zone, but they, they're, they're together on everything, so I'd like that, and I would not want to split them up, and that's, that's the one that keeps them together.
That is E.
That is E.
E keeps E's in.
E keeps, E, E would keep all three of those subdivisions, which are right down the street. So that's E is the one I like, with, with that change.
Can I say something? Windy Creek really needs help, so some things got to give. If we keep Amy Clay, we keep Berkshire, we keep Augustine North, we can bring the numbers.
Well, your numbers come up to seventy-two, seventy-two percent with only Augustine North is the only one I'm talking about any again.
See, Augustine North right now, according to the data that I'm using, has eighty-nine kids.
Well, that's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna find out when that comes back, how many of them are really in Augustine North, and how many may be in some other development that was thrown in there.
So, so just remember when you're thinking about E, that Emre Mill unit is split. So we, we're thinking about not splitting neighborhoods, we're splitting Emre Mill in E.
Is it North Emre Mill? We already split North Emre Mill for the high schools, and is, are they going to Park Ridge?
It's gonna have some middle school.
That's on C.
What is their middle school? Because they might want to stay split. Well, we, we, it looks like they all go to pool, but I don't know if that's.
But this is in high school, Emre Mill North goes to North Dabb.
But some of them might go to Thompson too, based on this map, I don't know if that's Emre Mill in those.
No, they will all go to pool.
They all go to pool, but they're split for high school.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And, and that was a development that was, are they, are they developed now? I mean, that hasn't been that long.
They are developing, they're not fully built out on the north part of Emre Mill, but, um, they are building.
That's, that's not in my district, and I'm focusing on, on mine, which I have the knowledge of in my district, so I'm making the request for, for my district, and that carve-out doesn't work for me, and what absolutely doesn't work even to a greater extent is sending Augustine North to Garrisonville. That is a circuitous ride, and it, it's several schools away, and that just makes. Is that, um, yes, that's Plan, that's Plan B, that, that I think is just, doesn't meet my common sense test. So that's where I am. So did you keep score on that plan?
Well, E definitely has, seems just for my.
Yeah, my, my number one is C.
Your number C?
But that doesn't change.
And my number one is C as well, but I can do C or E, and.
All right, so we have two, two Cs? Well, we don't have to narrow this down, but if we can't do it before we get to public hearing, we're gonna have an even more difficult time afterwards, because we're gonna get more comments.
I think you should force yourself to narrow one, to take one off the table.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Sorry. I also, since you are bringing up additional fees for, for more of these things, I think it would be appropriate for me to, I mean, it sounds like we're doing some moves, so I don't know, I mean, all I'm asking for is a few moves, so I don't, but I don't want to ask for something without the board's approval. I know, but this is more of a comment, I don't want to ask for something without the board's, uh, majority of you agreeing, if it's gonna be, I don't know, like what it's gonna tack on to, he's mentioning additional, uh, fees.
Well, this is a significant event. It has a huge impact on the county, and if it does cost us some more money.
I started off by saying we have the money.
Yeah, no, no, well, I just think it wouldn't be right if I didn't, you know, have the support of the board.
What's not right is you not having any choices, like just having.
I mean, I agree, thank you.
But, of course, you're gonna negotiate this.
We are being negotiated, believe me.
And it's, you know, the reward of working with us.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Well, let me just, before you do that, we will get right back to you, does anybody have any objection to running the numbers that?
Well, I've made my objections known, but I think as long as it's, I mean, as, as mysticator's describing, if it's really just some APUs and seeing what does that look like.
It, that's not a whole new plan, I mean, at least the way I understood.
Well, our other thing is, is.
So I don't have any objections, you know, thank you.
Overall.
But, but before you go.
Okay.
I don't, I, I told Ms. Young as soon as we got through that question. Your turn, and then yours.
Got it, sorry.
I, I mentioned this from day one, and I'll ask again, because sometimes I see ahead and try to figure things out ahead of time, and it doesn't stick yet, but we're here today. There's some good stuff in C. I'm, I'm out of the running right now, because I want B. There's nice stuff in E. We have, uh, in Dutchy Seheren, I don't know what the word is in, 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 in English, but there is like a dividing, kind of, some schools of the south and some on the north. Is there a way we could blend those two and kind of fit them to C, just in case, and if, if it doesn't move too badly, that we could work with that, and then on top of that, see if there's anybody else needs some changes? Because it sounds like, you know, there's two Cs, and there are three D, three Es over there, can we put those two together?
We can do it if you tell me what you like about which.
Well, the, the.
Take five more workshops.
Not, not really, not, not really, because C is there, and C is the south. C is south, and D is kind of the rest of the north. So, so that part of C, which is the Falmouth and, you know, Ferry Farm, Conway, Grafton, that kind of stuff.
Well, and to your point, Pam, I was able to really manipulate some of my APUs without touching anybody else, so there are some things that.
And so that's, that's what I'm thinking, like, just to put them on top of each other and, and just create that, it's not like, I, I personally don't think from my technical background, that it should take a long time to, you know, just pull that together as a map, not that going into that detail. The south and the north.
When you say that, let's, let's look at the schools, are there particular schools you're talking about? Or, um, because I, I think if we, if we're gonna ask for anything, we need to be very specific, because our time is, is running short now.
So the schools that I just mentioned, right, Grafton, Conway, Falmouth, which ones I'm missing from the two of each?
Well, Ferry Farm, Grafton, Falmouth, Rocky Run.
Rocky Run, and you may have, you may have to include Hartwood because of the.
And, and Hartwood then, so that's C, but you like E, right? Is that what you said?
I do, but it's because of how it impacts on the growth, I, I think it's a little better distributed here with E, and I think that E follows the middle school, um, I wanna say, I call it an overlay, but like, when it's the middle school on it, it seems like E follows it a little better.
Okay, so, so Hartwood is your contention, right? But those three schools, take those three items and bring them into E.
Um, all the way down Falmouth.
See, it's, do I, all I want to say is.
Yeah, please, please do.
Are you gonna say?
I mean, if I can say.
No, we're just trying to.
No, no, we're just looking at the overlap.
Oh, okay, all right, go ahead.
All I want to say is Windy Creek is projected as a high-growth area, so.
Windy Creek.
Windy Creek.
So if we want to keep everything...
That's what I wanna look at, though. Where is this growth coming from?
She doesn't know, she's just following the numbers.
Well, that's why we need Matt to bring these new subdivisions over. I think a significant portion of this growth that is projected for Windy Creek may be coming from the new subdivisions, which we may want to look at as potentially putting them in another school.
Now, Trish, the, um, the county was counting at one point that, that area off of Courthouse Road and where, um, Windy Creek is at, that whole area there was supposed to be townhomes, right? And then the board voted it down. Plankton voted it down, and then I think the board, or supervisor voted it down. Did that, that ever get taken out of the equation?
We'll know when Matt comes back, because that's what he's...
It's got to five minutes.
Okay, well, that's all right. I, I'm sure, see, this is more complicated than he thought it would be, because he thought it would take a half hour. It is complicated, but we need that information, and that may affect, so go, go back ahead. You said Windy Creek is a high-growth area. And we want to see where that growth's coming from, so...
And if we take Augustine North, right now I have eighty-nine kids in Augustine North. Then I go to Amy Clay, I have eighty-nine kids. And when I talk about eighty-nine kids, that's ten percent, almost ten percent. And then if we go to, uh, what do we do? You know, this area has, um, well, I should show you.
Okay, just, just get on these numbers. I wanna look at Amy Clay too, to see if that has that subdivision that's proposed to be developed next to it, if that's included in Amy Clay. Because that's, may not be Amy Clay. And we do have, um, someone shaking their head whom knows very well the numbers of students in Augustine North. And I'm getting the impression that that eighty-nine is not the right number.
Okay, I'll tell you what the numbers are.
And Amy Clay had eighty-nine? No. Okay, we're, we're gonna get to the bottom of this. And these are the two that I think maybe for the students that aren't here yet, so...
Well, we're waiting.
Okay, I, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting, and I apologize, but if, if I don't make this point now, I may not remember by the time we get back. So, so high growth, and you had eighty-nine and eighty-nine. But even if we had eighty-nine, and, and in Plan E, um, Amy Clay is in Windy Creek. So if we added eighty-nine, which I think is a high number, and added ten percent, we'd still be within our range, both starting and ending. Or, is that, is that not correct? If we're at seventy-two now, and we're gonna end up at eighty-one? And our range is eighty-one to ninety-one?
Is this, is this Plan E?
Yeah.
So if we're talking about Plan E, Windy Creek starts at seventy-two. In the fifth year, it gets to eighty-four, but we are not worried about the fifth year. We are looking at the fourth, which is, uh, which is eighty-one. So if we add ten percent to it, then it's, uh, it's going to go, and it's...
If you add ten percent to eighty, to seventy-two, you're at eighty-two. And you add ten to eighty-one, you're at ninety-one, which is smack where we said, eighty-one to ninety-one. Is, is that not what we said?
That is what we said, but I wanted, she, she, she's...
Okay, I know, but I'm, I'm doing the plane map.
That's where we are waiting for Matt, because eighty-nine is like next in four. But it's going to grow to a hundred or something more.
What, what, what's the distance? The distance to Brent, Augustine North to Brent and Windy Creek? Isn't the same distance?
He didn't want him on feet, right?
Let's see it up there. Let's, let's see it up there.
I, I'm not, my argument is not necessarily the distance. It's that they have been part of Windy Creek since it opened. It's a half mile down the road.
The, the front part, the front part is half mile. The back part is, the back part is closer to Brent.
And I, I won't, I won't disagree with you. And I'm not gonna disagree that it would be, you know, a, a significant distance. What I'm saying is, from a community standpoint, it is important to me as representative of the district, did, did that stay in Windy Creek, if we can make that happen?
Okay, there's Autumn Ridge, I, I will, I want Autumn Ridge then to stay, then Windy Creek also.
Alright, Matt, we're having a discussion about Amy Clay.
Right next to, um, Windy Creek.
Are any of these developments that are not here yet, are any of those included in the APUs for Augustine North and Amy Clay? We're coming up with children's problems.
See, my disadvantage is that I have four schools. And every single one of them are split.
No.
Nothing new. Augustine North is made of three planning units.
Windy Creek is my school. Um, Anthony Burn, Hampton Run, and Park Ridge. And, and we have kids that are living in those neighborhoods that go to Kate Waller Barrett. You've sent some of them to Kate Waller Barrett.
Sample of our bridge.
Hey, so, so Matt, in one of these APUs...
So, none of these planes.
Alright.
Mine, mine may help. I'm just saying.
Three twenty-two goes from thirty-nine to sixty-five students. How did that be in a built-out subdivision? In a course of four years? It's almost doubling, thirty-nine to sixty-five, not quite, but, how?
So, which one, which?
Three twenty-two point oh.
Do you know where, what area that is?
It's in Augustine North.
That's one of the three?
Oh, here.
So we have, I had my consultant, the consultant who does the projections, look at that. And he said it's a byproduct of that planning unit being in, in the area in the six-thirty corridor that's experienced and has experienced a lot of growth. So that planning unit is being impacted by the surrounding area, essentially that it's, that it's surrounded by. The smaller pieces, the planning units, are impacted inherently by the larger pieces. So when Windy Creek is showing a lot of growth, or that six-thirty, it's not actually just Windy Creek, but that planning area in the model is showing a lot of growth. Therefore, those planning units that are within that area are showing growth. The model also makes assumptions because of that growth that a lot of the student attrition, or new students coming in, are being supplemented with younger families to, because of the growth that it's been showing in the past at the elementary level.
So he had taken account in here, probably in other places, built-out subdivisions that had been, you built out for a while. That traditionally do not have a high rate of, um, student growth. In fact, if anything, they go down because the families age out and the kids grow up.
Yeah, so it's a byproduct of, of a lot of things that go into it, including in and out migration. So that would, that would be one way of an existing neighborhood showing growth. But, uh, does he look at, the model doesn't go down at every single neighborhood and say, okay, I know exactly what's going on in this specific neighborhood. Does that make sense?
It does, and, and, and that's what concerns me, because if people are moving to a neighborhood, they're not gonna say, oh, I'm gonna move to this part of the neighborhood, because that's where the kids are gonna come. You know, I mean, they're, they're most, they're just as likely to move into any one of these three APUs if they're in the subdivision, just like, say, for example, Stafford Place or anywhere, you know, subdivisions. People aren't gonna pick sections to move into, because there's more kids. There's no more amenities, there's no more anything, the houses are comparable, you know, same price housing. So, okay, that, that explains it, so I, you know, I would be shocked if I don't end up with that.
Can you tell me what this map is, and then real quick? These orange, this has development not active. What is that?
Sure, absolutely.
And just to know, not active, I know what not active means. I just want to understand, what do you mean by not active?
Sure, so these are the developments that we submitted to the consultant who does our projections as, um, developments that are approved, or maybe not necessarily approved, but that are not currently building.
Okay, so, with that said, okay, with that said, Hampton Run.
Or as of September thirtieth, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, Hampton Run is built out. Why is it on here?
Hampton Run is built out. Isn't that area a field? No?
Hampton Run?
Where are you looking at?
So we, we work with the county, and I'm not, I'm not deferring here, I'm deferring blame here, but we work with the county, um, and what I did really quick here was just did a definition query to get everything that was shown. But let me see.
Where's Hampton Run? In Strick.
It, it's like, it's like, um, six-tens.
Hampton Run, no, I'm sure it's...
Oh, I see, I see.
It's up north, right?
Yeah.
Let me see here.
Unless it's another Hampton Run.
It, it may be, I'm trying to, because I believe I actually looked at that, just, you know, for a different purpose.
Yeah, I'm looking at the Autumn Ridge is in Windy Creek. In E.
Yeah.
You just...
Yeah, I said, Emery's divided, I, I knew about that one.
Okay, well, I thought you were saying you wanted to pass in.
It says it's approved, not under construction. The database says that, or Hampton Run.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe it's the area right behind a Walmart shopping center. If you come down Austin, Mine Road.
Right.
Come down, and right behind it is Woods.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you think there's something coming there?
Well, that's what this represents.
Okay, because there's, like, there's not, there's a stop, there's nothing there.
If you go from that shopping center, if you go down Mine Road, the first, uh, road that you hit right before...
Yeah, I, I know what that's a word.
So it's that Woods area that...
Yeah, I purposely drove yesterday again, just to make sure that I had all my streets together before I came here, so... And you have done one, it's not built, but thank you for...
You wanna make one statement, then I'm out of here. I've had enough of this job. I'm going to go to Stafford High School. I think you made a statement that I think you guys should maybe consider. If there's not a shovel in the ground, and that's impacting your numbers, I mean, I hope in, in not that long of the time, we're gonna be talking about a new elementary school, where you're gonna have to read districts all over again.
There's no place to put the kids.
What's that?
There won't be any place to put the kids.
What I'm gonna say is, like, this thing, when I hear you say Woods behind Walmart, that it's just Woods now? I wouldn't factor those kids, there's no kids there. It's just...
You know who owns that, that's never happened.
The squirrels.
That's the helping family that owns that. Behind Walmart?
No, I'm talking about Wybwater.
Oh, yeah. But there are a couple on here that, but if I could go back to one of, one, ten, I want to...
What's in North County?
Windy, Windy Creek's where we have located. I mean, they all should have, this one, uh, across the states, for example, because I'm in this area. This land is for sale. It's, no, you know what I mean? So that could be very similar for areas in, you know, other areas that are projecting this one.
I make just a broad comment here. I think one thing that we're all, that we're all looking at, or I hope we are, and, uh, Wayne's touched on this too. I, I think one of our goals, or an overarching goal of this whole thing is, can we move as few kids and uproot as few kids as possible? And if there are ideas within the board members of ways to do that, I think we should pursue them. Not go on, but if we can come up with ways that we can uproot less families, I, I think that's a great thing.
Someone's idea, someone's idea could be the silver bullet.
So, uprooting as less families, not E?
Yeah.
That's the most.
Well, but I think the, I'm, I'm just making a broad comment, and I know Jamie, but remember, there are some huge neighborhoods that move under certain ones that then swing all the numbers. I don't know.
Sorry.
Okay. So, um, one of the other things that I think, um, now that I can drill down on the map, I do think for all of us to look at, you know, some of these that are split, I have to say, two or three of them, I didn't even catch, but I have to say, even with the zoom, I can only go so far, I will want to be looking at a couple of these, and I think we all do. If we can not split, I think, um, you know, the ones that are identified, all the better. And then I guess the last question I would have for consultants and for Matt and stuff, are there any APUs that come to mind for you all that they, that the APU goes to, like, a school that's not the closest to top three or four? Does that happen in any of these? Because, I mean, to me, that would be one I would want to fix. And I, I, I kind of know mine, but I kind of don't, but I would have to...
Yes, the ones that you, you're sending to Kate Waller Barrett from Park Ridge, that's five.
But still, they are within the fourth, five.
Yeah, but it's like, the third or fourth, I think.
I know the first five, but I'm saying, how many are not in the first?
And that's a bold decision.
One or two, how many get to three?
Yeah.
Maybe. How many are there APUs that are at their third farthest school? I'm not saying we will change them, but I'd love to put the identified.
Somebody sent us an email recently about that. They said they were the four here.
Well, in, in Plan D, come on, if you're, if you live in England Run and you're going to Brent, oh, and, um, Hartwood's closer, Rocky Run's closer, Thaumout's closer, Conway's closer. I agree, but I, I was just trying to, and actually, I asked you even more from the, the global one. Are there some that I'm missing? Because, you know, Sarah and I both have talked about them. Those, that I understand, and I'm, I'm glad. But are there some other APUs that, when you were doing this or Matt's, that really are outside of? Now, we all make...
Do, do you have a list?
Is there any way to know that?
A list real quick, just to tell us, like...
And I'm not trying to go make work, but that's kind of the broad question I would have.
Yeah, is there any way, like, you could just sort and say which three, fourth, and fifth school? All the students that went to the third, fourth, and fifth school?
Does that make sense?
Yes, it, it, it does. But in some cases, you know, even though we are picking like the fourth or the fifth, it's just that the area is so tight, the difference is like one mile versus three point something.
Well, but still, I would hate to think we're even looking at the fifth closest school. I mean, that, to me, is really unconscionable to move somebody five schools away.
Yeah, let me say a few things here. One of his, one of the things that you really ought to consider is like Stafford, like Windy Creek, somehow if you can increase the program capacity, because I know everyone wants to go there. But the data that is, that I have, that I'm working with, is saying, you know... See, I did some, I did some, uh, kind of forward thinking where I thought that, you know, the hump in, uh, Crafton and Stafford, I looked at it, and I said, if I put them back to Stafford, in the, I would start at eighty-five percent, which is good, okay? But then, the very next year, I would go to ninety-three percent, and by the fourth year, I would be at ninety-eight percent. So now, whatever we can say about the data, the data is based on a model. So if it sees twenty-two, then it goes to twenty-five. In some cases where it jumps to sixty-five, there must be something going on. But the data is, you know, wherever you see the changes are gradual, they're okay. But for Stafford, you know, eighty-five is a good start. Then I get, get to ninety-eight in the fourth year.
So you're saying if we put the book, those, those neighborhoods that are on the other side of...
Yes.
That, that little, as you say, you can describe it, that camel hump that's in all three plans, you're saying if we put that back into Stafford Alimentary's school, we're gonna be at ninety-eight percent in four years?
Yes.
Without moving something out.
Without moving something out.
I would, um, I would, I, I wonder if we could potentially take the, um, these neighborhoods out of our numbers? Like, i- is there a way, for example, this is...
They are, they are.
So, so for example, this is all one or two APUs. I'm just gonna talk about Wybwater, that's, that's all I know. Um, if you take, okay, so this is one or two, maybe three APUs. If you were to take these neighborhoods out, not the numbers, these neighborhoods out of the APUs... Um, I would really like to see our entire plan, and, and I'm, I'm not asking for you to do this until we, you know, solidify a couple of plans, but I would really like to see the full plan without these neighborhoods in it.
That's a tricky one, because the neighborhoods are grieved into the APUs.
I understand, that's why I'm asking, if it's possible.
And the problem is, if I take them out, I can only look at now. I cannot look at the projected numbers, because the projected numbers are based on the whole AP.
Yeah.
So that is the problem that I have.
I mean, but guys, that's a really big problem, because we're moving real bodies for, I know, for a fact. These, in my name, in my community, these are never getting built. And we're moving bodies out for something that is never going to happen.
Well, I, I would just say that, um, I wanna say a majority of these, but not, not the majority, but there's a lot that aren't impacting the projections until we leave the projection, pending the projection. Now, um, Matt, just, we're just talking, there are some that do affect it earlier in the projections. So there are some, so I don't want to rule out and say that, you know? So, um, we can specifically tell you... So, um, we can specifically tell you which one of these, and where, right now, where we assumed we started to build out, make growth for those developments. I think we have that data that we provided to our.
And I, and I think that that would be helpful specifically for the people where we're, we're moving, like, this, this help, it doesn't make any sense. Because if you can tell us when, you know, that data's coming, we might have to do some things that's not ideal for everyone, right? But if we can get this data, everyone's, they'll get their maps now. So, if we have that.
Are these, are these the ones, as of September the thirtieth, twenty eighteen? So, what we calculated were the ones that are gonna be developed by twenty, twenty-two? So what you did? So the developments, we didn't do a seven-year plan, we did a four-year, correct?
No, on this, we're just using the projections, projections look at all ten years of anticipated growth then again.
But, but you have ten, you have twenty-twenty, okay, so you did seven, you did ten years, but only gave us one, two, three, four, five years.
Uh, we have ten-year projections, and then there's important, some shit five.
So. Should we have projected less years? Because we know by a certain date, we need to have another elementary school. So, what I'm trying to say is that, if we should, we should be building, for example, we should be thinking about building a school, an elementary school, like, right now, to put kids in by, say, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-seven or so. And if we are doing this for ten years, if we have done it for four, we would have different numbers.
No, it would be.
You're telling me there was, there'll be identical if you had narrowed it as four years versus ten?
Because the first four years worth of data would be consistent.
Will be the same.
But it would show a picture of what the need would be.
So the projections do help us project that future need for the school, right?
Right. Well, we had, we had an elementary school of eighteen in there.
Regardless where the children are, in aggregate, we're showing a need for, you know, we know there's a need for elementary school in the future, based on our projections, we know that.
Okay, I was, I was thinking.
So, so were we attempting to do anything this meeting? We seem to have digressed.
We're removing a plan, that's an action.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be an end goal for this meeting.
That's an action item, remove a plan, it seems like I lost in D, and that there is C and E, so we could take that as an action.
Well, we can't take any actions.
Well, I'm just saying as an action item that we want to make progress.
Right, we can, we can reach a consensus, and give direction on what we want to bring forward for our next work session, but we can't.
But we have a meeting.
Go ahead, Chair, you're the.
We have a special call, okay, well, afterwards, and we can, all right, so, so is that, yes?
Madam Chair? I said, you're Madam Chair, so.
No, are we, is that a consensus?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it to you guys, I, you know.
Because yours is the same as all three, right?
Yeah, whatever you guys decide, I'll go with.
Yeah, C and E, C and E's fine, yeah.
I'm not a fan of C, because it puts them on the fall of Poplar Hills, and I'm trying to get everybody.
Well, we're just trying to narrow them down.
Yeah, okay, so.
Well, did you, did you like D?
D, uh, D, D, it's, it still keeps my.
Right, yeah.
But you could say D makes some changes.
Right. I mean, that's what Trish, that's what Trish did, she wanted, I wrote it down.
Yeah, well, yeah, I already said what I, what I would like to see, I want, what I would like to see is, is putting, putting them back, putting Brimstone and, and, um, Poplar Hills back at Stafford Elementary School. We're gonna find out from Dr. Kizner tomorrow about the bus rides between Everly Apartments, oh, that was another question I have for you. Everly Apartments, two hundred eighty-eight apartments, how are we only projecting twenty kids in the next five years?
Currently, they have twelve.
Well, according to.
Oh, oh, is that why they're currently twenty-one, so they're built out?
Yeah, and they get two hundred and seven apartments. If we're using the county formula, then something's off.
What?
I talked to the staff over at Staffordell, and they said they, they got, it's a stream of new.
But is there, there were twenty there this year?
New registrations.
And they were built out?
They're built out or are they sold out? Is that their problem?
I don't know.
Well, Dr. Kizner. It was just a careful.
Bush up, yeah.
Dr. Kizner said you can have the actual, double check the number for the back tomorrow.
Naked?
Sure, that's what, that's why we're gonna go back, and we're gonna double check the enrollment coming out of Everly with the school, we have that data in our student information system. And we're also gonna check transportation, to see how many students we're transporting from Everly. So we should give you a clear number of how many students are there today, right? Our projection.
I gotta, I gotta just caution, using current data, mixing with September thirtieth data, it gets hard to keep a consistent basis of information.
Well, there's a significant difference, I'm sorry, if there's a significant difference between September thirtieth and today, then that needs to be taken into consideration, because hypothetically, it should not be that big of a difference. And if it's, if it's rising, then there's a reason for it to rise, and it's something we should take.
But you can't, you can't run all of these just based on the changes from today.
No, but, but I think that it, what I'm saying is, we've got a two hundred.
Two hundred eighty-eight apartments.
Two hundred eighty-eight apartments that are generating less than thirty kids, and they're fully built out. Now, somehow, if that is accurate, then that doesn't fit any model that I've ever heard of.
Well, if the apartments are expensive.
But, but yet, over in one section of Augustine, we're gonna be multiplying, you know, depending on it.
Well, we're certainly gonna find out. I, I, I want to say that during the development of Everly, there were some, there were some provisions associated with those apartments, but we're gonna look into that, and have that data for you along with this.
Yeah, so.
Originally, it was only, they were only meant to be, you check this out too, originally, they were only supposed to be two-bedroom apartments, which, which would have limited the number of students coming in. But then they applied for a re-zoning, and they were approved for the third bedroom, so that increases the number of kids.
So, out of the.
So what's going on?
We did a calculation, this is last year's calculation, of new development that included multifamily units, and the multifamily unit student generation factor for new developments was point one one three. So you take two twenty-eight times point one one three, elementary student, you get thirty-two and a half students.
Yeah, but you have, you have to, from a practical standpoint, the size of the apartments is gonna influence that, I mean, I'm not saying for your model, but what I'm talking about is what we know about our districts and things that may not come into your model.
And that's fair.
So, we're counting twenty students, and all of a sudden, bumps up to one hundred and twenty, you got a problem.
And I, and I don't like to, I don't like disrupting, you know, a community that has roots in favor of a brand-new brute that just came in, who's probably gonna leave in two years, and displacing those rooted families, that's, that's my major issue with that.
So, is where Everly is, is not contiguous to the Grafton boundary?
That's the right.
What boundary is it, what is the closest one?
It's closest to Staffordell, but.
Well, but, but in terms of, if it weren't Staffordell, what is the next?
Anthony Burns and Falmouth will be the closest contiguous, if it's not contiguous.
Right.
No, no, not Burns.
No, see, here it is, this is where we, uh, where we.
Burns, it will be, when they get the new courthouse.
And Burns, this is.
Right.
Well, even without the courthouse interchange, I'm just telling you.
It's also, um.
It's closer to Burns, and it's closer to Falmouth.
Yeah, the theater part looks like it goes.
Right.
It's the closest, um, Staffordell.
What's that?
Grafton is not a, um.
It doesn't seem to be a very good, uh, match with Grafton. Not to say it couldn't work, it doesn't, in my opinion, I think, the way that we're looking at Anthony Burns, it has some attendance on this side of ninety-five, and it goes up almost to, uh, to where are, to this school, right, in some of the proposals. And so, it could be, it could be a player.
Is it room in Burns?
For twenty-some students.
Well, I'm gonna let, I will let the consultant speak.
Burns cannot take.
Burns cannot take anymore, we, we, we can't take anymore, sorry.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
The closest is Stafford, Burns, Wynd Creek, Hampton Run, Monqueal, those are the five closest.
But if you don't want to go that way, you have to go down the right one.
What, Falmouth would be the closest thing down.
Is there any room in Falmouth there?
Well, um, it depends on which plan we're going with, right? If we're going with Plan E, I'm gonna request that Clearview not be split, and that that half of Clearview go back in, so you'll be adding twenty-two kids to Falmouth at that point, and I'm not sure if Falmouth can then take another twenty-two to thirty-two coming from that one. So it just depends, I mean, and, but that's Plan, that's Plan E, Plan C, they're already in there, but, but then, the problem there is, um, if Plan C has Conway, um, it, so it's not contiguous, so that, that would be the issue.
And Falmouth and Conway are pretty tight, cannot take anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
But Burns is only in A.
Right, and so, what, what, did we decide what we want the consultants to do, besides looking at Jamie's plan?
And could we get the list of those?
Can we redo a combination of C and E?
Okay, let's, let's call it Jamie's projected, Jamie's gonna give some, some APU's to say how to look at.
Yeah, so I'm just giving adjustments.
Not a slam thing, no.
All right, so now about looking at a blend of C and, whichever one we decide to use, like, say, for example, C was good for two board members, and E was good for two board members?
Have you asked them more?
Just so we have a second option, just some adjustments.
Three, two?
Three.
Three? Can we look at a blend of those two where it's not touching? Four, you're four?
Um, yes, I mean, that, it works for me, I, I was waiting to listen to what everybody's, it sounded to me, well, I'll put my list away, but it sounded to me like even, even that could work for, for you guys with some tweaks.
Yeah, we, so if we take E, but blend the C, the south part that, um, helped, you know, Falmouth, Grafton, and Conway, keep that the way it is in C, and bring that over to E.
So hypothetically, if we were going with E, we would, you would want to see all of Clearview and Falmouth?
Yeah, all the, I think.
So that's something we want.
And, and I still have as a concern, though, I'll reiterate it, Plan E has this very high-density kids, very poor families, Stafford Junction, that, that group being pulled out of Rocky Run, and I'm pretty sure they've been at Rocky Run since Rocky Run opened.
So they need to stay in Rocky Run.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, that's an issue, but.
And, and sent where?
And, and sent Conway, so, um, that's why I.
What is their closest school?
Four, what's the neighborhood?
Okay, that's the one you mentioned, I see.
And I understand that, because we've not had issues in the past where we have moved a high-needs area to a school that had not had that in the past, and did not know how to address it.
Yes. But that is the same, that's the same thing as Monqueal.
They, they learned, but, you know, there was a learning curve, and that was not fair to the students and the families that got removed.
But, I mean, you know, I mean, obviously, we can't all get everything that we want, and there are gonna have to be concessions made, so I, I, that's, that's my concern with you.
Well, is there some?
I think we have to work with that seventy-five, and, because we either loop on the bottom or we loop on the top, because we couldn't keep right, and so, so what are the, what is the closest neighborhood then?
The closest is Falmouth, three point seven, Rocky Run is four point four.
Right.
And then it's Grafton, which is five point one five, then Conway, then very far.
So it'll be going to the fourth school, that's what, that was what I was trying to get earlier to try and understand.
So, I'm sorry, I, what was the closest, was Rocky Run?
No.
No, Falmouth.
Falmouth is, Falmouth doesn't have room.
Right.
Falmouth does not.
And what was the second closest?
Rocky Run.
And where are they now?
Rocky Run.
Rocky Run, so it seems like the ideal would be to leave them in Rocky Run, so they're not disrupted.
So they should stay in Rocky Run.
That's Plan C.
Okay, but is there a way we can incorporate Plan C into, say, Plan E?
So.
That would.
That, that, the blend, I didn't.
Dominoes.
So you have to move somebody, well, but.
Well, none of it's not touching, like, it's not hardcore, if you only do Conway, Falmouth.
Yes.
All right, but is there somebody that could be moved?
And third.
But what was the third school?
The third school was Grafton, which is proximity-wise, it seems to be very difficult to get to.
I know, but I, I mean, I'm just trying to, I don't want to, but my problem is, some of the growth, then, on some of the other plans, if you go that way, you know, like, it, it, it's the domino, I mean, like, we all know, domino, we start one thing, it throws off the other things that work.
So I would say they're to the.
It's just, yeah.
I'll tell you this, Falmouth and Conway have been done so nicely, they are so tight, and Rocky Run too, so it can, well, but.
And that's what I'm saying, that's why I don't want to move them, I just want to see, we could take that and lay it over E, to see if they're, can we connect the two, without making a lot of.
Yeah. So.
If I may, if you take the, the parts that you like in E and say, these are.
I, I have no plan, I'm just saying, that there's E, and then there's C there.
And just stick with a plan, and let, let the consultant manipulate that particular plan based on the input, versus just, you know, no disrespect.
Right. Right.
Yes, yeah. No, 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 it's good, that, that's exactly what I'm, I'm heading to, I'm heading, um, a concession here, where there are some, some nice stuff for the south, and there's some nice stuff for the west and east.
So, tell me, what do you like in the south, E or C?
Okay, sure, sure.
Because I think they are.
Depends on, for me, for me, I prefer C. C.
I prefer C as well.
Yeah, I think C is good.
So that's, so we're gonna keep C?
Now, now, I, let me just say one thing, one thing for C, uh, which is, we had a neighborhood that was, that was moved in the last redistricting, let me find it, um, it's Falmouth Village and Leland Heights, and they, there aren't a lot of kids there, and they were moved from Conway to Grafton, and they would really like to stay in Grafton, because they just got, they need to stay.
Okay. They need to stay.
Which points?
So this is Falmouth Village, one sixty-nine point one, and.
How many kids?
Leland Heights, one sixty-nine.
One sixty-one point one?
One sixty-nine and one sixty-nine point one.
One sixty-nine.
It's like thirty, total of thirty-five kids.
One sixty-nine point oh, or one sixty-nine?
One sixty-nine point zero, and one sixty-nine point one.
Thirty-five kids.
Okay, so that's, yeah, thirty-five.
That's.
But it's still, okay, then, Leland Heights, is currently split?
Well, it's the part that's, the part that's currently going to Grafton Village wants to stay at Grafton Village. So they're, they're, are they fine right now, they're fine right now, it's Falmouth Village that gets to see in C.
No.
So, Leland Heights, it looks like, is staying the same.
Right, Leland Heights is still split between Conway and Grafton.
But, but, but that's what they're doing right now, so they're, they're okay staying where they're at, it's, it's Falmouth Village that is currently at, at, uh, Grafton Village, and in E, we go Conway.
They, they need to stay, and we just moved them, absolutely, and I have to say though, when we moved them, nobody wanted to move, now they want to stay.
Oh, right.
Right, right.
Ben C is.
Hold on.
Plan C is like that? Okay, no. We got, got it mixed up.
You got it, Plan E is that, we want to stay with Plan E, if that's the case.
Right, 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 good, yeah.
Yeah, Ben C is good.
Plan E is the one that got a company.
Plan E is better for the more.
Okay, so you guys, you, so, we're gonna keep Plan C and Plan E?
And Plan C is better for the more.
E. I'm not, well, okay, we'll see how, we'll see how the numbers run, because it's really tight down here now.
Yeah.
And when you start moving some of those bigger numbers, it is going to throw everything up, off up here, because it's gonna have to push this way.
Yeah. Okay.
Just so you know, I mean, it, it doesn't seem like it's a domino effect, but if it's not, it's a domino, and fifty to seventy kids in a school that's at eighty-nine percent will throw it out of the map.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
But let's, you know, I mean, we can, if you all want to have it right, and C, but I think the numbers are gonna be, I mean, I like how.
But right now, it's good, I think the neighborhood she pointed out, they are in the right place, and Plan C.
And also, here's the thing, if.
C for the south, the north isn't asking for C.
Right, C for part of the south, because some of it doesn't pay.
Listen, if you, if you make those, this is, this is, this is where it becomes a board decision, because if you look at the, the projections, and I'm just saying theoretically, if you can do that, if, let's just say, if you went with, um, Plan E, but you made that.
Right.
Plan C swap, well, then, you know, if it's at ninety-four percent, but it's staying pretty stagnant, or, I don't know, but this, this might just be a board decision, where you'd say, well, this is the best thing for our community, and this is what our community wants, and so we're gonna vote for it, even though it wasn't quite within the parameters, I, I don't know, I'm just tossing that out there.
You're right, we have, we have discretion. We can't be unreasonable, we can't be arbitrary, but we can make adjustments based on factors that have been raised to us.
Matt, the second part of that um question that I had about the apartments, um it's, can you check, recheck the numbers for Brooksmill and Poplar as they're presented in Plan B? Um, as far as I know, Brooksmill is filled out and there's one lot left that's for sale, so there's not, there's no people on it. It's not showing up in your development, it's not active. Can you check the the projections for that because what's what what it says here in the paperwork is that they're expecting sixty? And that doesn't sound right to me.
Brooksmill and what was the other?
Uh, first section, Poplar Hill, whatever's in, whatever's in Plan B.
That is being moved in Plan E. In Plan E and Grafton or Stafford?
Uh, Stafford L, to be moved to Grafton, yeah.
So, wait, wait, oh, I'm not talking.
Say that one more time.
Oh. Yeah. Okay. Every mill, right? It's split in Plan E. Not in D.
Okay.
Which part of every mill is, um, is it the new part that is going to to be? Is it the new part, so the new part that's going to Partridge, I think?
In Plan C, where it's split.
No, in 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 E.
In E.
Oh, yes, in all E, really.
In E. So E, every mill's all together, being proposed to be reassigned to Partridge.
E.
E's, E's, every mill's together.
But it's going to Partridge.
Yeah.
It's being moved to Partridge right now, it's together.
Yeah. Yeah, it's together.
In Plan E.
And what?
In Plan E.
Right.
In Plan C it is split, proposed.
So in E it's together.
In E it's together, in D it's together at Windy Creek.
Yeah, I know, so but but in E.
It's.
It's between the two.
It's together. Okay.
So we're still seeing with.
So, I'm sorry, and in C it is split and the new section, the section that's currently being dischecked in now is the part that's being proposed to be reassigned to Partridge.
So, um, so I'm looking for, we're still, right now, it seems like there's still C and D, there's some, it is, it is keep that going forward for now, that we may work on the those. Um, some suggestions are coming in about the Wide Water area, um, on that. Um.
Which is not gonna affect anything in the south. It's, it's really gonna affect, well, no, it should just affect the Moncur and the Hampton Oaks, right, Jamie? Those two districts.
It, yeah, no, there there is no spill over.
Just Moncur and Hampton Oaks.
It affects Moncur.
Maybe Barrett a little?
Hampton, no Barrett.
Okay.
It, and the only other school it affects, hold on, wait, let me tell you, it it affects.
Well, let's see.
Wide Water, Moncur, Hampton Oaks, and it, the only other school it affects is it pulls out from Windy Creek. It pulls sixty-something students out of Windy Creek, but it doesn't put anything in anywhere else. It's just playing with those three schools, there's no spill over.
Wait, what, what do you have?
She was just, no, I'm telling you, there's not, so.
What, what? That's it, please, Jamie?
Well, when you challenged me in all my hours.
I told something else. It's all, it's all weird.
I was up late.
It's not gonna happen.
She, they're accusing me of of dumb love that.
No, no, her stuff.
No, 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 I went to question.
No, but which part were you all thinking about the sixty? Which three schools were you, which three, which three schools were you referring to?
No, I heard. It's Moncur, Hampton Oaks and Wide Water.
It's just up here.
She's just asking about when we do, when when they start shifting stuff to give me an an option for my people, whether or not it's gonna spill over another school. Okay, now I'm back to Holly.
I listened to my ears.
Excuse me.
Holly was finishing.
So right now, I I understand we have, we are thinking of, I know we can't make a decision with this one, but E and C are going forward, it's something to be tweaked or looked at or something with some of the suggestions. Um, the Wide Water um plan will be somewhat incorporated, we'll get to see that. Um, then there is a merging of E and C, but that I didn't quite understand, but I guess I will wait to see what.
I'm not so sure it's a merging, it sounds like it's, it sounds like just.
We kind of merged.
Like an overlay?
Yeah, just kinda.
The the stuff that's working.
Just don't mess with the southern, the southern schools are pretty tight.
The stuff that's working in C. Yes, the stuff that is working.
Well, Holly has, Holly has kids in the south.
But C for me.
Right, but Holly, Holly is in both.
Right.
But there's some.
For some of those, this established neighborhoods for me to keep them in there.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna.
So, but you.
Under C, under C, there's less ability to move along.
No, but you like, you like E though, right? E works for you, so that's my point.
But you want to see Cardinal Forest and Rocky Run if it's possible?
Just because it's that kind of school, they literally look at Geico to look through to to Rocky Run. They've been there a long time and it just, you know, I, it it's a request, it may not happen, I get that, but I do.
So what is it a fact, like what does that change affect, that it is pulling, like what is it?
Like I said, I had some of the ideas at the beginning of looking at that growth in Stafford Lakes,
Okay.
which I think is kind of ambitious.
Okay. So.
So I'm just saying, for me, and it also hits, it also incorporates in E those people that I talked a lot about on Lake Estates that are right at Centerport, keeping them in Margaret Brunt because they would be like twenty-seven homes going to either Conway or Falmouth and then going back to Rondi Thompson, going back to Mountain View, I just feel like they should stay, if possible, on the side of.
And they can take my spot, I'm gonna leave some empty seats somewhere.
On the side of Mountain View, just from a, from a, from a driving perspective, so that would be my.
There you go. You tell her, tell them what, which apartment you don't want.
It's it's in E.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I mean, just.
But it's in E, so it's okay.
Pluses and minuses down, down. More or less.
And then, there were no APUs though, that you all have major concerns that were really not moving too far? Cause that's too much, okay, that I, that was just, I wanted that overall far.
Yes.
Okay.
Partridge to keep Paula Barrett.
I'll tell you, it's like hardly any distance, one point three, two point two.
Cause that's not what I'm asking somebody.
It's still distance, they're now where they are, it's distance, I don't wanna move them.
No, it's, it's, it's. It is so close.
It doesn't matter, I have four schools that I'm worried about and there's nothing working for me right now.
Okay, let's go.
So, Madam Chair, yeah, so, so, um, not that I wanna wrap this up, but.
Yeah.
So, it looks like, it looks like there's a consensus with with C and and E. And then each board member should go ahead and send in their uh tweaks to each plan or their concerns, whatever you wanna call it, to each plan. And then I would, I would suggest, Madam Chair, I would suggest, Madam Chair, that we come back and have the ability to, um, Scott, you know how we have the, if we can manipulate the percentage, total percentage of kids at the school.
What are you doing with the high school? With the, with the APU changes on the fly, that would really help us with the next work session.
I don't know if we can do it, but kinda like, you know, okay, you wanna add, you say there's no, you say there's no change in, change in these five APUs. Uh, Grafton Village is now at ninety-two percent, you know, so I I think that would be very helpful for the next go around on this.
So, yeah, so Jamie and I talked about that too, right, Jamie?
No, please, continue, you guys take all the credit for it, just, I just, I just want to get that down.
No, I know, stop, stop.
I'll deal with the pattern, you guys take the credit, I just want to have.
No, no, I was just, I was just gonna add value to what you were saying.
We have to talk, ask the consultants if they can do it. I mean, the pivot table is, you know, we've done that before, but their data, they have all the data in their program and they need to answer that question, whether they can provide that to you.
Okay, well, I I I'm gonna go back to mine because I'm not quite clear on how, do you add ten percent? It doesn't come up to ten percent. And and that's the adding Augustine to Windy Creek, if you didn't make any other changes and if you added it in.
Okay.
You said it would be adding ten percent, but ten percent plus seventy-two, in my math, comes up to eighty-two.
And that's good for the first year.
Right, and.
But then in the second year, we cannot keep it at ten percent.
Well, well, look at, look at year four, you can, because year four goes up to eighty, what?
Eighty-two, sorry.
Eighty-two, eighty-two plus ten is ninety-two, which is one percent off our range.
Yeah.
One percent is not significant.
How about the number of kids?
If you're, if you're okay to not worry about ninety-one percent, then we can pay it off.
Well, I'm talking about one percent.
That's ninety-two.
Well, then, then you go back to my argument, those numbers are inflated, that there is not a section in a developed subdivision that's gonna multiply by, you know, forty-two percent in four years. The contractor or whoever came up with those numbers said, because this is close to Courthouse Road, everybody on Courthouse Road is growing, but this is an established subdivision, so there are some flaws in that. And I mean, I'm just looking at it on the surface, I cannot believe that one section out of three in a subdivision is gonna go up by forty-five percent and the other ones are gonna go up by less than ten percent in projections over the four years. There's something that is not accurate with that, so if you take that inaccuracy out, then you're below the ninety-two percent.
What we can do is so far, we were just guided by ninety-one percent and it was going over ninety, ninety-one percent went back. So if you're okay with ninety-two, ninety-three, then yeah, a lot more things can happen, but.
Well, I see one is ninety-five, how did Harwood get to ninety-five point seven five?
That's right.
That's, that's in the fifth.
Oh, the fifth year, okay.
Fifth year, which we are not.
Well, you're gonna be multiplying like rabbits that last year. Well, ninety-one point three-three. I mean, i- if if Windy Creek would be at ninety-one point oh-eight, it's less than ninety-one point three-three, which Moncur is at here.
So can I continue, people, what what did you just say, Priti? So if you get a couple of percentages more, you could do more things?
Yeah, I mean, see, you said eighty to ninety-five.
It's still below, it's at ten.
So this is the thing that I mentioned.
And you're still below Moncur.
So this is what.
Yes, I just want to say.
Not ninety-two, it's eighty-one point three.
So, 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 but this is what.
Okay, let me tell you this, you know, we are thinking that it's going to be static ten percent, right? But that's not the case for Windy Creek, it just, I don't know what happened, that's what you showed.
So this is.
I'm just using your numbers, yeah, I'm here, I'm I'm speaking as the Rock Hill.
No, 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 yeah, what I'm saying is we don't, if I'm picking, if I'm picking different APUs, it may not be, the numbers will be different.
Okay, this is the thing, I think we.
It's not ninety-two, it's ninety-one, we don't weigh.
Can I, can I say something? Can I say something? When you hold yourself these numbers, like this range, very tight, can't go over this and don't go over that, this is what Priti was doing, making sure that she gets the numbers that you all are referring to. I've said it before, give them a little bit of range, meet, a couple here and a couple there to be, even if it, no, I'm I'm just saying in terms of.
Eighty, eighty.
Yeah, but, but what?
We, we.
But 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 the highest part, ninety-one, don't go over that number. But if she did something, for example, and it was like ninety-two point three, she was looking at it like, oh, I can't go over ninety-one.
Okay, well, let me just say, I don't want any of my schools going over ninety-one.
And they would go like that.
This is, this is when we get to be board members, if there's one neighborhood that comes in and puts it at ninety-two,
Yeah.
that's when we get to be board members.
Yeah, but we didn't see them, we didn't see them because.
But you, but you, but you asked, but you asked, you asked for it and if it works and everybody agrees, then then it moves forward.
I'm probably at ninety-one point away, so I'm actually less than my class.
No, I'm saying, even even before that, when you were working those numbers, I mean, ask, I mean, ask Priti, did you see instances where the plan would have worked, but the numbers went a little bit over?
Absolutely, and then we went back and we said, oh my god, that's ninety-two, ninety-three, I have to go back.
Okay.
I'm gonna fall asleep on this pen, man.
I would have loved to see those plans.
I still, I still wanna make this point, it would not go to ninety-two, it would go to ninety-one point oh-eight, which is us. I just wanna make sure, let's clear on that, cause you said we can't do it, it's ninety-two, it's not ninety-two.
Stop murdering will and shall, Arish, you're not gonna win.
All I want to say is, I really want to solve the Windy Creek problem, but if you wanna keep everything there,
It'd be a lot less painful to just give it to the will.
then I don't know how to do it, you wanna keep Anne Glade there, you wanna keep Augustine North there, so something's got to give.
Not if you wanna stay at ninety-one.
Okay, I'll work the numbers out.
Well, so that that goes back to, we we picked the two, Madam Chair, we picked, we forgot the plans. Everyone sends in their um APU suggestions and then we come back ready to run those numbers. And then you come back.
That's gonna be chaotic.
Yeah, it'll.
But but it's.
I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be timely.
We've got mine, we've got mine, I can, who are we sending these numbers?
Yeah.
Do we send them to?
No, I I think we send them to Dr. Kiser.
Okay, we send them to Dr. Kiser.
Yeah.
And Dr. Kiser will provide it to us.
And I'll wait to get your information that I requested from him, he's sending it to us.
Can I just get these two to you?
Right. We'll get that tomorrow.
And then that way, well, if it does pop up to ninety-five, maybe not yours, Trish, but you know, maybe.
Well, I wanna fix that road, these two, problem.
Yeah.
And if that goes up above ninety-one, I'm, if if you're okay with it because it's your school, I'm okay with it, because.
Well, that's. See, that's sixty, that's sixty-one kids in that area, uh, that'll move back to, won't move to Grafton, but they'll move back to Stafford.
Right.
I don't think Grafton's gonna say, oh, please, don't move back to Grafton. Don't don't move, you know, they don't, they're not gonna care if these sixty-one kids stay at, right?
And if you do.
That's not my thing.
Yeah, I wanna hear, I wanna hear that.
Which, which plan?
But if Stafford L goes to ninety-five percent, then we might have, you know what I mean, I I just don't know that. But, cause it is, it's a, it's a large, you know, sixty-one kids.
So, wh- which plan would that be? Would that be D?
Right now, I have C open, C.
Okay, so I'm gonna go with, well, actually, D, if you put D.
Mm-hmm.
If you put the two APUs for Hampton Oaks in there, it's at ninety-two percent.
I put D was already up too.
D is up, well.
E, no, I'm saying, if you take E and put those two APU units in.
Oh, D, oh, D, D, D.
Oh, E, E.
Okay, well, that's probably already gonna happen, so you're, you're okay with E then.
Yeah, but fine, but I'm saying, that will take it to ninety-two percent and I'm, I'll be okay with E.
And then where are they coming out of?
Partridge.
Well, Partridge, okay.
They're going, and nothing else is moving, they they go to Hampton Oaks.
Yeah.
Oh, my school's all below ninety-five percent.
Yeah.
Ninety-two.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
So Conway, Falmouth, Ferry Farm, the Grafton, that block of schools, maybe, we'll move, yeah, we'll move Rocky Run and Harwood.
That is, that will be my, that will be.
One. I start with.
What?
One below ninety.
It's fine.
What, what was that?
Have to.
In four years.
Does anyone just wanna not redistrict at all?
What?
Um, hello?
Good.
What have I been saying?
All right, okay, so.
I don't think we have that choice.
So, I will take D with a little bit of change.
What is happening?
Trish, Trish wanted.
A what?
D?
What?
D or E?
I mean, E, E, I'm sorry. Wait, APU, what are the two numbers?
Oh, the APU number, so.
So.
So I I think what Mr. McCosker brought was a great idea that.
What is that, we send them to Dr. Kiser?
You provide, yeah, in Plan C, these are the four things I would like to see in Plan E, these are the three things.
I just wanna know the number of.
Three things.
Please, please.
And please, it's important.
Yep.
And we'll collect them all and we'll have all the things that the board wants to do for Plan C and all the things the board wants to do for Plan E, and then we'll try to start adjusting those and we can strive to bring those back at the next work session for you guys to see.
We have a choice, we have to have it because we have to make a decision in the next work session is what's going.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Correct.
Unless you all wanna meet again after, you know, between next Thursday and.
There's this thing called the budget presentation.
Budget.
So I think we need the plan to be finished with the plans that are going to the public hearing.
I'm just hoping that the request.
Aren't too crazy.
That's right, and so based on what I heard today, I think there's focuses on five or six areas.
Add two APUs.
And uh.
All right, don't tell us, write it down.
Three sixteen point O and three sixteen.
We, certainly tried to take good notes, but having it regurgitated by you guys on the email.
Oh, please, I'm gonna.
All right, so do we, so so are we done here and we have a special meeting to delete Plan D?
Can I just add one more thing, I'm gonna give them to you right now.
Yes, ma'am.
The Dr. Kiser already.
I would like to have a copy of that.
Okay.
Thank you, I was trying to rewrite it so that it was easier, because you could just give me five minutes, I know it's time to leave, but.
You got it. Yeah, it's all good.
C.
No, I think that's for the special call meeting, that'll be the next work session.
Then we decide what goes next, they have one, we have one now.
We have one tonight, so.
Oh, we have one, yes.
To delete Plan C, uh, Plan D.
D, C, C, then C.
And D.
C, C.
D.
C.
D.
D.
So I'm gonna turn for.
All right, all right, so where's Mill, um, this is, we're gonna start our special call meeting, we're gonna close the work session.
Where's Missy?
Special call meeting, roll call, please.
Here.
I'm always the first one.
We're all here. Here.
Uh, E.
Here.
Really?
E goes after.
Oh, sorry.
And E, and then H, and H.
Dr. Kiser.
Here.
Okay. Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazer.
Here.
Ms. Haley.
Here.
Ms. McArthur.
Here.
Okay.
I'm sure you have a form.
All right, um, we, do we have a motion with respect to, um, the three plans that we discussed at the work session tonight? Specifically whether we, what we want to bring back for the next work session next Thursday?
I I move that we remove Plan D from consideration.
Second.
All right, do we have a motion second, do we have any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, all right, so Plan D is removed from consideration. Do we have any uh a motion with respect to how we're going to make our suggested uh adjustments to D and.
C.
To E and C, Mr. McCosker?
Are we gonna make a motion to accept E, uh, E?
No, no, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about.
Okay.
So, yeah, so I move that, I move that board members submit. I, so, so, yeah, so, I move that, I move that board members submit, uh, to Dr. Kizner, adjustments to Plan C and to Plan E.
By Monday, by Monday morning.
I don't know, that's the thing, what date do we do?
By Friday afternoon.
Friday COB.
So, Friday COB?
That's tomorrow.
Oh, that's Friday tomorrow, uh, when's, when's the first meeting?
Well, yeah, I can do it tomorrow.
When's the first meeting?
Thursday.
Thursday, how about by Monday?
I mean.
The sooner the better.
Oh, I know, I know, I know.
No, 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 we need a time.
How about by Monday, close a bit.
Noon, noon, Monday?
Noon Monday?